This meeting is called to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Kim Reese.
I lost it, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Okay. Let's bow our head. Our heavenly father, I would like for you to guide us through this evening tonight and have us do your will and not ours. And if I could ask you to please watch over the soldiers that are overseas and here at home and to assist them to come home safely. And in your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kim. The announcements and events be Assistant City Manager Chuck Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending. The effective date for Halton City water restrictions, which we go into every single year, was June the first. The residents and businesses should be aware, watering is not allowed between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. except by hand watering or using a soaker hose. Broken, missing, or misdirected sprinkler heads must be repaired, so we'd ask that each one to look at those when they do turn on their systems. Be aware when water in excess does not fall or overflow on paved surfaces. Runoff is not allowed onto the streets or other drainage area. Watering during any form of precipitation is prohibited. Rain and freeze sensors are required on irrigation systems, particularly those installed after June 1st, 2007. And these violations may result in fines which could go upward to $2,000 per incident. The Halton City's recreational spray ground is also open for the season. Hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. seven days a week. Anyone may use the spray ground, however, the Recreation Department requests everyone to follow a few rules. Glass containers are not allowed. Please do not put anything into the spouts or fixtures or block the drains. This causes damages to the spray ground that may require shutdown for repairs. Unfortunately, this has happened in the past. The library annual summer reading program has begun, however, there is still time to register. The summer reading programs are at three locations. Tuesdays at Beacon Park, Wednesday and Fridays at the library, Thursdays at Buffalo Ridge Park. This coming Friday, June the 13th, the Fort Worth Zoo will visit the library and bring along an alligator and a penguin. I don't think the penguin's for the alligator to eat. The programs are fun and the kids can sign up for free. Please call the library at 817-222-7786 for details and a full schedule of events. I may go to that one myself. Celebrate Independence Day at the Quad Cities Family Fourth fireworks display. The fireworks show will begin at 9:30 p.m. Friday, July the 4th. Your vantage points are the parking lots of Walla G. Thomas Coliseum and the ATI Career Training Center. Both locations are located on Great Vio and Highway. As always, the fireworks are free to the public. There's been an increase in incidents of graffiti in several cities. You've seen quite a few notices of this in the paper. Halton City citizens are asked to help stop the problem. Anyone who sees graffiti should report it by calling 817-222-7000. This is the police department's non-emergency number. When calling, please provide the address and description of the graffiti. However, anyone witnessing graffiti taking place should immediately call 911. That way, we can all solve the problem.
Mr. Clark, you have a question for...
Yes, sir. Chuck, reference the watering restrictions. Can you tell us how that affects people with private wells, residents?
Well, I noticed that it... Of course, water is everybody's issue here, Mr. Clark. We only have so much water, and I know a lot of this is underground and people got private wells. And I have seen where people have put up signs saying they have their own private wells. They're not following the same restrictions as turning on the water hose. However, I would caution everybody that we only have a set amount of water. It's becoming a very, very precious commodity for all the citizens and everyone on the earth.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. Next up, we have a presentation from the All Church Home for Children. Susan Sneed, you're gonna come up and make a presentation? Thank you. Okay. And you can, if you need to wander around, you can pull that loose and adjust it however you want to. It's also mobile if you want to unclip it.
Okay. I think I'll just stay here.
Okay, that's fine.
Hello, good evening. My name's Susan. I'm with All Church Home for Children here in Fort Worth. And I have a master's degree in counseling, and I've been working with youth and families in the community for about four years. I'm just here tonight to tell you about who we are, a little bit about what we do, let you know that we're available in the community if you have needs in your family. I work for the STAR program, which is state-funded, and we serve youth zero to seventeen and their families. And the types of situations that we serve are family conflict, which can cover a variety of things, truancy, misdemeanor offense, and runaway situations. So, in addition to the counseling that I do with families, I also teach a first offenders class every week. Some of you may have heard of the First Offenders Program. This is for youth who have committed a misdemeanor offense for the first time. So, it's a five-week program. If they successfully complete it, they can eventually have their ticket dismissed and off their record. And we teach them a variety of things like, you know, life skills type things and anger management in that curriculum. And I have brochures about the STAR program up here. Also, another program we have is Safe Place. This is where youth up to the age of seventeen can go if there's a domestic violence situation at home or just another reason that they're maybe not safe, they're afraid that they're not safe at their home or wherever it is. The signs, you've probably all seen the Safe Place signs, they're yellow and black. Most of the Quick Trips in Tarrant County are Safe Place locations. A lot of libraries, police stations are Safe Places, so they can just go there and ask for help. And we have a commitment to be there within 30 minutes to assist them. So, if any of you have questions, please feel free to call or email me. I have cards on the table. I have Safe Place information in English and Spanish, STAR brochures. So, and you can also visit our website, which is on the brochures, to get more information about our programs and the services that we offer. So, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for being here. Any questions for Susan? Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, you'd said that it was state-funded. Does that mean that if a family is in trouble and they need some help, are they gonna have to come up with some funds in order to receive the help? Or is that gonna be supplied by the state?
Since it's funded by the state, there are no fees associated with that for the STAR program, for the counseling. And we get a lot of our referrals from school, but now that school's out of session, that doesn't mean that families don't still have problems or get in trouble. So, I think it's important just for members of the community to know who we are and what we do and that this is an option for families to have that counseling because it really does help the families of lower income or that have other financial obligations.
Right, so that it's, that they can come in and get counseling for free?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question for Susan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Mayor?
Yes.
All three of our fire stations are also Safe Places, is that correct? Okay.
Thank you again, Susan. Next, we have a presentation from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Mr. Dale Flieger has a presentation to make. Dale?
Mayor, Council, thank you for taking, giving me some time to visit with you. My name is Dale Flieger. I'm Director of Library Services for the City of Weatherford. I'm also the immediate past president of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, which is an associate organization of the Texas Municipal League. Each year, TML and TMLDA give awards to a very few number of libraries in the state. This year, in 2007, the Halton City Public Library received this award. On behalf of TML, I'm glad to present this award, the Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award to the Halton City Public Library.
Thank you.
You're probably wondering why I brought another person off out of the audience up here. I wanted to introduce Brenda Grossup, and many of you I know already know her. She's a former employee of the library and she is a member of our Friends Group. And she was the one who put this, the notebook together and submitted it for this award. So, I wanted to be able to recognize her and to say a big thank you to her. And thank you very much, Dale. Thank you for coming from Weatherford, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor? And congratulations, Leslie. Yes, Jim?
Just, she, our library director, Leslie, referred to a notebook. And for the audience that may not be aware of what that notebook is, it is a compilation that is a big notebook, about that thick, that is gonna be over in the mayor and council room for display for anyone that wants to stop by City Hall and see that. It's, I'm really looking forward to seeing it. The city manager let us know of its existence and all the work that went into it, so I'm really looking forward to seeing it. I hope some of you'll come and see it, too.
Right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Now, the consent agenda consists of items one through eight, one through eight. And Mr. Hutchinson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you may have, I may have jumped the gun. Were you getting ready to consider a motion?
No, you're fine. Yes, that's what I was gonna ask for.
All right. I make a motion that we approve items one through eight on the consent agenda as written.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for a second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one through eight. Is there any discussion on the desk? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. That Mr. Holcomb may, he obviously is late and may not make this meeting.
He's, he is trying to get here.
He's trying to get here.
He's trying to get here.
All right, okay. Moving on to the regular agenda, under public hearings, item nine, final plat, P-002-08. This will conduct a public hearing on consideration and/or action regarding the application of Theron, Sims, Landis and Associates for the final plat of lots 5 AR1 and 5 AR2, Block 5 of the GW Burkets subdivision, being a replat of a portion of Lot 5A, Block 5, in the D duplex district, containing approximately 1.001 acres of land located in the north side of Carnation, locally known as 4001 and 4005 Carnation. Mr. Pliska, you wanna tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Halton City. This applicant is replating the lot possibly for resale. They're cleaning up a large Lot 5 here and therefore taking care of it with this replat tonight. There are two existing residential structures on the remainder of this Lot 5. The applicant has secured a variance for lot width on Lot 5 AR1. This variance was passed by the city zoning board of adjustments at their April 8th, 2008 meeting. Again, this final plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The decision was the May 13th, 2008 PNZ. Therefore, I formally submit for your review GIS aerial indicating the location of said property, the 11-by-17 final plat document, and the exhibit for the variance went before the zoning board of adjustments indicating the structures relative to the lot line. It's a good, clean document, we're ready to move forward on it.
Thank you, James. Any questions for staff from the desk? Seeing done, I'll open up the public hearing. Any comments for or against for this final plat item from the audience, from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve final plat, P-002-08.
Mr. Cabano?
That's for a second, Mayor.
Been moved and seconded to approve final plat, P-002-08. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Item 10 is ordinance number O-2008-014-015. CU-001-08, conduct a public hearing and/or consideration and/or action on the application of Guy Tucker for a conditional use permit with a site plan approval for a vehicle fabrication facility, auto adaptive driving equipment on Lot 1, Block 1, American Legion Post Number 655 addition in the M1 Light Industrial District located on the west side of Carson Street, containing approximately 2.414 acres of land, locally known as 2817 Carson Street. This is for a first reading. James?
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, this is a vehicle fabrication facility. Advanced Mobility Systems of Texas fabricates vehicles, predominantly vans, cars, and trucks, by installing and servicing adaptive driving equipment for the disabled. We've also enclosed a business performance standards for advanced mobility systems, and that is Exhibit B in this ordinance. And it briefly details the business that's here tonight. At their meeting on May 27th, 2008, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this conditional use permit and forward it to the city council. Therefore, I formally submit for your review GIS information indicating the location of the site. The ordinance which describes this conditional use permit and the following exhibits. Exhibit A, which is a very detailed site plan indicating the development of the site into this vehicle fabrication facility. And by the way, this site plan document met every one of my items on the checklist. This is a historic event, and they did a very good job on this, by the way. And Exhibit B is, of course, the business overview of advanced mobility systems. And Mr. Tucker is here tonight in attendance, and he has additional information should you need it.
Any questions for Mr. Pliska? Thank you, James.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tucker, do you wanna make a presentation or you just wanna be available for answering questions?
I can be available for answering questions if you'd like.
Okay.
Do I have any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tucker? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in attendance at the PNZ, and I want to say my hat's off to Mr. Tucker for having the vision of doing this and to stick to it in this because I think, or I know, as he progressed, costs went up on this in several areas, and he stuck to it. And he has a great idea and a great vision, and I think this would be an extremely good addition to Halton City. It's a great location over there on Carson. And this was an excellent, excellent site plan. Every, not everybody, several of the commissioners were discussing, very pleased with this document. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Mr. Tucker. Have you selected the color of the stone facade yet for the front?
I kinda like the Austin stone.
The Austin stone?
It's all getting down to cost now because everything, like the fire hydrant, is very expensive.
Yeah, okay. Austin stone would be great, thanks.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Tucker? If not, I'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Anyone want to speak either for or against this ordinance, this conditional use permit? Just please state your name and address, thank you.
My name is Don Lavender. I'm past commander of the American Legion Post 655, and at present, the adjutant of Post 655. You know, the main objective of the American Legion is support our injured, disabled, and sick veterans and non-veterans. I think that throughout the three different locations that we've had in Halton City, we have fulfilled our obligation to the community. When we came to the position that we were going to have to sell the building and move into a smaller facility somewhere, Mr. Tucker come to us, told us his visions, and I think this would be a great, great, great example of someone supporting the disabled veterans and private citizens. And I think Halton City would be very proud and very fortunate to have an organization and a building and a facility like this in your city. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to this conditional use permit in the public hearing? Seeing done, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve ordinance 02008-014-15. First reading for the conditional use permit as presented.
Ms. Branson?
That's for a second, Mayor.
Ms. Sutton, what's yours for a second also?
Yeah, that's for a second, but also for a comment.
Okay.
Is it okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna echo what this man said that came up. I was with a father today whose son was in Iraq and had both his legs blown off. And this facility is gonna do, is gonna be helping him, I think, in the future. I don't know if this specific one, but one just like this will be very helpful. And so, we just wanna thank you for coming to the city and doing that.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, I'd like to express my thanks to Mr. Tucker also in bringing, and of course, our city is, the Carson corridor is being enhanced even more now with this business. I talked to a man today whose son is disabled also, looking for a facility like yours to produce a vehicle that will get him around and make him more mobile and his car more mobile. And I'm proud to say now that one exists in Halton City, so thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a, we have a motion to approve ordinance number O-2008-014-015, conditional use permit, double oh one, dash oh eight. Any further discussion on the desk? Please register your vote. That is unanimously approved. That's on the first reading, yeah. Item 11, this final plat, P-022-07, conduct a public hearing and a consideration and/or action for the application of Rich Burns on behalf of Sharon Dunn for the final plat being a replat of lots 13 and 14A, Block 14, Clarence Jones subdivision located in the C3 Commercial District containing .385 acres of land, locally known as 1701 Higgins Lane. James?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The applicant, Ms. Sharon Dunn of Dunn Glass, is final plating the site to develop the vacant property located at the northwest corner of Carnation Street and Higgins Lane. The proposed facility will be an office warehouse facility. The final plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This decision was at the May 27th, 2008 PNZ meeting. Therefore, I formally submit for your following approval. GIS aerial indicating the location of the facility near the Bellknap Higgins intersection. The 11-by-17 final plat document is very good, very well-prepared document. Site plan indicating the proposed facility. And also, we've included a landscape plan to indicate the facility was designed around the existing trees located at the site. So, we're pleased to bring this forward. This has been in the workings for well over a year. And Mr. Jerry Capes will be the contractor at this particular site.
All right, thank you. Thank you, James. Any, any questions for staff on this item? All right, that being the case, I'll open up the public hearing then and take comments for or against item 11. Seeing done, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton?
Move to approve final plat, P-022-07.
And Ms. Branson?
That's for a second.
Been moved and seconded, well, just get a little quicker on the button there. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 11, final plat, P-022-07. Any further discussion on the desk? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Item 12, ordinance number O-2008-013-11, consideration and/or action on amending ordinance number O-2008-009-11 to adopt a change in the speed zone on a portion of State Highway 183, Bellknap and 28th Street, Control Section 0094-02. And this is the first reading. Ms. Fane, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Staff did come to you in March of this year and asked you to pass an ordinance that addressed the speed limits along Bellknap and 28th Street. And if you recall, the recommendation and the approval of the ordinance at that time was to change the speed limits along Bellknap and 28th speed to 40 miles an hour with the exception from Big Fossil Creek east to the city limits line. The recommendation was to change that to 45 miles an hour, which you did. This particular ordinance, we asked that you amend last ordinance and change that speed limit that was from 40, from 40 to 45 from Big Fossil Creek east back to 40 miles an hour as per Tech Dot request. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any, any questions for Mr. Fane? Oh, Ms. Branson?
Thank you. I think it would be good to tell the... I think it would be good to explain to the citizens why we are going back and undoing what we did, that it wasn't something that David came up with. Tech Dot kind of said, oops.
Correct, they just came back with a letter a couple weeks ago. Well, even further than that, we were wondering, staff was wondering why they did not post signs. So, we put in a call to Tech Dot, and I guess when they started reading our ordinance that they decided, maybe it was an omission on their part, but they decided they wanted to change that particular section of Bellknap back to 40 miles an hour. So, yes, it was a request from Tech Dot, not from staff, to change this particular speed limit.
Okay, they got what they asked for and then said, oops?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's accurate. We gave, we did what their original recommendation was, and then after they got our, your ordinance, they decided to change their mind.
Okay, all right. Just wanna point out that while we're discussing that, Chris Holcomb joined us. Chris, welcome. So, any, any, any further discussion or questions? Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, Mayor, when, when you read this off, you said, oh, maybe I just heard you wrong. O-2008-009-11, isn't that O-13-11?
No, that's the old one.
Oh, the old one.
That's the one we're amending.
Yeah, it's amending 09.
Okay, I'm sorry.
13 is amending 09.
I misheard you then. Sorry, my mistake.
Yeah, there's gonna be two ordinances on this speed limit thing.
Ms. Branson?
Oh, I was just in line for a motion whenever you decide.
We gotta have a public hearing.
I understand, but you said I needed to be faster on the button, so I just wanted you to know that I'm in line to make a motion when you're ready.
She's waiting on you, man.
So noted. We'll now, we'll now open up the public hearing for comments for or against item 12. This is the ordinance changing the speed limit on Bellknap. This is, any, any comments for or against from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Ms. Branson, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, I would. I move that we approve ordinance number O-2008-013-11 as presented.
And Mr. Holcomb?
That's for a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number, ordinance number O-2008-013-11. Any further discussion on the desk? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. The next item is, next up is the Visitor Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having, having... This time is set aside for any person having, having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the Open Meetings Law. Being said, was there anyone who would like to come up and address the council and the Visitor Citizens Forum? Seeing none, I will close the forum and move on to item 13, resignation of board members. Do we have any resignations tonight? Doesn't appear we do, so we'll move on to item 14. This is the appointment, reappointment of boards and commissions. Ms. Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to submit the name of Carl Grassel to the zoning board of adjustments.
Mr. Grassel to the ZBA. All right, any discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. And Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my entire slate, and all of these are my same people that I've had before, so I'm just gonna read through them if that's okay.
That'd be fine.
For beautification board, Denise Ford. Crime control prevention district board, Beverly Henson. Fire service board, Harlan Streeter. Library board, Jerry Moore. Parks and Recreation Board, Howard Hall. Planning and zoning commission, Terry Fletcher. Sexually oriented board of appeals, Johnny Crabtree. Zoning board of adjustments, Sonny Elliott. Thanks, sir.
All right, any discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Any other appointments? Seeing, seeing none, we'll move on to, we haven't, and having no executive session tonight, we'll move on to item 16. Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed item 15, attendance requirements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed on the last ordinance, I believe it was the last one we voted in, that Mr. Holcomb got his voice recorded, that he was here. So, that means he gets his paycheck. Does he get the full check, or we're gonna prorate that a little bit?
We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that.
It's only $10.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how you, how much you can prorate that.
With the budget coming up, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have, we have no, no excuse to absences of council members tonight. So, there being no other action tonight, this meeting is adjourned.